No, no one responded.
Julie and Michael let me know they won't be here.
Hi.
Hopefully. Just you and I. Ryan, I think we'll delay for ten minutes or so and see if we can get a few more people here.
We don't have to, we can go home.
It's our specified timeframe. Hello.
Earring, huh?
Bye. Hi, John. Glad to see ya. Okay, well, we have a quorum. Let's give it just a couple more minutes. We're just gonna have a couple more minutes, see if we can get some more people up here.
Phil can't read it.
Tiny. If three members are present, a positive or negative vote must be determined. Okay, tell me how you interpret this. So, when only three members are present, a positive or negative vote must be determined, otherwise it will be tabled for lack of majority vote. Does that mean we all have to vote the same if there's only three of us?
No.
Just has to be...
Positive or negative vote.
So we just don't have to vote?
We don't have to vote, yeah.
I think Bob's gonna be here, I think he's gonna be, he mentioned he might be late.
Joe's usually pushing it, so.
We'll give it just one more minute. Six oh five. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you, welcome. My name's Shelley, I am chairing the meeting tonight, this is the Planning Commission. We're here in the Providence City Office Building, today is June eleventh. Let's go ahead and get started. To my right, I have John Peterson, he will be a voting member tonight. And to my left, I have Bob Washburn. I anticipate some more to maybe show up, but if not, we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and proceed. We'll go ahead and move forward with the pledge. Oh, well, absent, for sure, Ty, for the record, Michael Fortune and Julie Martin will not be here tonight. As of yet, we're waiting for Joe Chambers and Bob Henke. All right, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Bob's going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our first agenda item is just the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. We'll just get some of that business taken care of real quick. Do any of, do you guys have any comments or any concerns with the minutes from our last meeting?
Uh, no changes or issues for me.
I, I don't have any.
Okay, great, let's go ahead and move on then, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from our last meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries. Thanks, thanks for taking care of those minutes, Ty, it's always appreciated, they're looking awesome. All right, now is the time of our meeting for public comment. So, this is public comment that's not relating to an action item later on the agenda. Uh, but it's an opportunity, if you have anything that you would like to discuss, to bring up with the, with the commission, uh, now is your time to shine. Do I have anyone who would like to make a general public comment? Don't be shy. Okay, perfect, uh, let the record, oh, do we have anything from email, texts?
Yes, but in regards to item number four.
Okay. Yeah, we'll address that then, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the general public comment meeting of, uh, session of the meeting and move forward to our public hearing. This is item number two, the Timberbrook Homes Rezone Public Hearing. The Planning Commission will take comments and questions from the public regarding the rezone request for parcel zero two zero nine six dash zero zero four eight, which is located in the general area of three fourteen west, one hundred south in Providence. Uh, the request seeks to rezone parcel from AGR to R one six. Hi, Bob, welcome. Uh, this is Bob Henke, he'll be joining us for the meeting. Thanks for joining, we're just getting started with item number two, our public hearing. Hello, welcome.
Uh, this, the hearing for the zoning change?
Yes, that's right. And John, would you mind just grabbing that as soon as he's done, um, signing it? Thank you. Okay. Um, so, uh, for these public hearings, I usually have Scarlett come up first, so she can kind of just let you know a little bit about, um, you know, what, she could sometimes can answer your questions before, before we have to bring you up to the mic to, um, to speak. So, I'll have her come up now, we'll go over, um, the, the report, and then we'll open the public hearing.
So for the audience, this report can be found online if you go to the agenda and look under, it's not under the public hearing, it's down under the action item, and it's called, I can't remember if it's a, it's the staff report. There's a link for staff report, not exhibit, right? Oh, it's an analysis, okay. That, you can find that. One thing I want to make clear, and we'll talk about it as part of the staff report, in legislative items, which means that it's going to have to go to city council for an actual ordinance to make a change, the Planning Commission is a recommending body. So, the Planning Commission does not have the final say tonight. They will listen to your comments, um, they will discuss among themselves, and they will, uh, make a recommendation to the city council. The city council does not have to follow that recommendation. They can do their own thing too, but they do, our, our city council has been really good to, um, listen to the Planning Commission meeting so that they can hear your comments as well, and, but you are certainly welcome to come to the city council meeting the night that they discuss this. As Chairman Nazer said, this is going to, they're requesting to change this zone from agriculture to R one six. And R one six stands for residential, a single family, so one single family unit on the lot, and a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. So they can have a twelve thousand square foot lot, they could have a fourteen thousand square foot lot, but they couldn't have a five thousand square foot lot, they have to have a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. When the Planning Commission considers a land use decision, they are, have to look at some things. State code wants them to look at findings of fact and conclusions and conditions. Not so much state code, but the courts want us to look at those kind of things so that we can make sure we follow everything correctly. For our finding of facts, one of the things that we really look at as far as, especially on jo- zone changes, is we look at our general plan, and we see what our general plan says. And there's a summary of our general plan in the, a summary of the objectives of our general plan and our, um, key initiatives in the staff report. And we also consider our moderate income housing plan. The Providence City General Plan, twenty twenty moderate income housing plan. As you probably heard on the news, Governor Cox and the state are very concerned about the ability for people in Utah to be able to have homes and to afford homes. And so, they've made laws within state code that Providence City follows. And one of those laws is that we have to look at how each one of our zoning changes is gonna impact the ability to get more housing for people in the state of Utah. And that's part of what our moderate income housing plan does. We look at Utah Code nine A five oh, five hundred series, which talks about, gives the legislative body, which is the city council, they have the authority to weigh policy considerations and enact a land use regulation, and a zoning change is a land use regulation. The legislative body may divide the territory, which is the city, over which it has jurisdiction into zoning districts of a number, shape, and area that it considers appropriate to carry out the purposes of the Utah Code. Now, one of the things that we used to have, um, a long time ago, the zoning code encouraged people not to do, um, smaller zones. They, they wanted kind of more, um, continuity between zones, so not as in density, but as in actual size of the zone. That's since changed, and that's why it says that, um, they can look at, um, changing the number of zoning districts into the shape and the area that it considers appropriate. So it's no longer necessary, necessarily to have a certain amount of acreage within a zone. There's a lot of, um, discretion left to the cities so that we can create this, the city the way we feel like we want it to be. The Planning Commission, as I said earlier, is the one that will review and make a recommendation to the legislative body. Before you, the Planning Commission can make that recommendation, they have to hold a public hearing, which is what they're doing tonight. In our general plan, um, then we talk, and then we look at our general plan, as I said, we also look at Providence City Code ten dash five, which talks about sensitive areas, and these are sensitive areas such as high water table, um, steep slopes, uh, faults, all those different kind of things. Not that this property has those, but those are the kind of things that we look at. And we look at Providence City Code ten six one, which lists the uses in each of the zones, and ten eight one, which lists the area regulations. And by that, we mean the si- the sh- the size of the lot, the setbacks, the width of the lot, those type of things are in the area regulations. The city has divided the city into zoning, or Providence City has divided the city into zoning districts. The city council is the legislative body for Providence City. The Planning Commission will review this request, and after reviewing, but prior to making a cup, uh, recommendation, the city council, the Planning Commission will schedule and hold a public hearing. And the Planning Commission reviewed this request at their last Planning Commission meeting, and now they're holding a public hearing. The city, um, zoning districts do include ag. And for comparison purposes, I put the R one twelve and the R one si- the R one six is what they're asking for, but the R one twelve is the common zone mostly throughout the city. That's a residential zone with one single family home per lot, and the minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. There again, they can have much larger lots, they just can't have smaller. The application process is consistent with what we require in ten five one. And so then we talk about the general plan. The framework map in the general plan, um, looks at this area, and it's near a Providence City core, it's near a mixed use node, which means that you can walk, um, it's a small collection of retail and services, service uses focused on, um, a corner or a single block, serving the immediate and surrounding neighborhood. Mixed uses in zo- are in horizontal formats, or they can be, um, in a stacked format. So, there's, but this is near one of those areas where it's easy to walk to. You can walk to those and get to those type of housy, or that type of housing, that type of retail within five to ten minutes, that's what this mixed use node is. And it's also in an area that's designed for neighborhood residential development. Uh, the proposed zone change supports key initiative six, which encourages housing options to meet the needs of residents of all ages, income level, and family size regardless of their stage of life. It also could lean to support our moderate income housing. The proposed zone change assists with moderate income housing strategy one, which is to rezone for densities necessary to facilitate the production of moderate income housing. However, the city recognizes this zoning does not determine unit pricing. Unit pricing is determined by the real estate market. In our parks, we look at our tra- our parks plan, we look at our transportation plan, and you can see the results of those within the, um, zoning, or within the staff, the analysis report. You can also, we also look at impact to our water rights. That's the water that we can use, that we can pull up from the ground or get from springs. We look at the, what it will do, how this will impact our water rights. We look at how it impacts our wastewater system, and our stormwater system, and our culinary water system. All of those impacts, this area has been included in all of those studies, and the way that the development helps with those is when the house actually comes, when the home builders come in, that's when these will, impact fees will be paid. So rather than, um, taking things at the time of zoning, most of these occur at the time that the house is built. The one thing that is different in that is that in the water rights, we ask for water dedication at the time the subdivision is recorded. So, but those things will happen down the future, not right now at zoning. In order for us to know what to ask for in those things, we need to know what zone we're dealing with, so zoning comes first. And then, Providence City Code ten dash five dash two is the one that talks about the sensitive areas. The summary shows that there are irrigation facilities adjacent to or within a hundred feet of the area. At the time the city receives a subdivision application, the city will contact the appropriate irrigation company to review the plan and make comments on the development plan. I think this came up from one of the audience members at your last meeting, and we, we are concerned about that too, we do work with the irrigation companies. Um, it's just that we notify them at a different step than the zoning step. It's also adjacent to Alderwell. And a portion of this area may be in a water source protection zone, but it's the same type of uses that are already there, we just kind of monitor and test our wells and stuff all the time to make sure that everything is okay. So, it's not a use that would stop, um, that would be dangerous for, to be in that source protection zone. It's one of the permitted uses in that zone. And then there's also a summary of the uses that are allowed in the district. They're pretty much the same one, same uses that are allowed in an R one twelve, which like I said is the common district. However, in an R one six district, you cannot have livestock. Even if you have a big enough lot, if your zone is in an R one six zone, you don't get to have them. The area regulation chart is the one that will, that you can look at that tells you the different sizes and how those dimensions are figured. We also have, uh, some conditions that we recommend the count, the Planning Commission consider as part of their recommendation, and that the applicant will address comments from the Planning Commission and any staff reviews that prior to making a recommendation, they have to hold a public hearing, which they're doing, and then the city council will make the final decision. The final condition we have is that the applicant shall meet all applicable city, state, federal laws, codes, and rules. Approval by the city of any application submitted or paperwork does not alleviate the owners and/or their agents from their responsibility to understand and conform to local, state, and federal laws. Providence City's approval is not intended to and cannot be construed to allow any laws to be violated. In the packet, there is also a review letter from Aaron Walker, who is, uh, the deputy fire marshal for Logan City, we contract with Logan City for fire services. So he's the person that we turn to for all of our development review. His comments are more, they're appropriate for zoning, but these comments will actually, they're kind of like our impact fees. They will take place as we go further on in the development process. In the packet two, there is the letter, um, that says that Dallin has the ability to represent and apply for this rezone change. Your packet will also show, um, the parcel summary that shows if there are any, uh, sensitive areas in this area. There really is not, other than the irrigation line and the source protection area, which we will, like I said, we will watch that, we watch our wells very closely. And then it just shows how this property is situated with the zones around it. As you can see, if you're looking at the packet, um, there's the R one twelve is the light gold color that's on the east side of this property, and kind of, um, to the south. There's also a gray pars- park, and that is where the well and the park are, that's called a public zone. And then to the west of this property is R one ten, which means the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. And then down the road just a ways, um, right straight across from this property, it's still got agricultural, and then down the road to the west just a bit, you've got more agriculture where the church is, but then you have, um, RM eighteen, which is residential, multifamily, eighteen units per acre. So, they can be less than that, but they can have more than eighteen units per acre. So it's in an area that's kind of like a quilt, 'cause just a little further than that, then you get into the commercial zone and the commercial highway zone. So, it's kind of one of those areas where it's got lots of pieces going on, just like that mixed use node, um, contemplates. So, that's our report, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Uh, I have one real quick, what, it doesn't, I haven't, not that I don't do my homework. Um, it says that, in the general plan, uh, what is the, the zoning supposed to be at this parcel? On the county, it shows a little bit different than our general plan, our general plan doesn't, um, you know, it's in the framework, but it's not on the actual map.
I don't think our map actually contemplated this, I think it left it white.
Yeah.
And it should not have, but it did.
Okay.
So I, I didn't...
It looks like SFR.
It kind of does, yes. It looks like you could've gone that way, that direction, but it's not real strong in what it is.
It's not really specific there.
Yeah, it was kind of, I don't know what happened with, when our engineering did it, and I don't know why we didn't catch it sooner, but it's not as clear on this piece as, as normal.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, do you guys have any questions for Scarlett?
No, I don't think so.
I think I do. What's the state definition for, um, moderate housing? Or, what does that letter say, where'd it go? 'Cause I understand there's a, there's a price, so.
Moderate income housing.
Moderate income or low income housing, I think.
Right, well, low income housing, they're not a, they're not asking us to meet the low income housing threshold. They're asking us to look at the moderate income threshold, and that actually varies from county to county. That's based on the median income for the county. So, the median household income for the county, I should, need to say household, 'cause it's not individual, it's household income. Eighty percent of the median income for the county is considered moderate income housing. And I don't think I did it for this report, maybe I- And I don't think I did it for this report. Maybe I figured out what it would be. But in Providence, in Cache County, moderate income housing would allow, if you were at the eighty percent range, and with the interest rate that we're looking at, it's probably less than three hundred thousand that moderate income housing could afford. So but you have to keep in mind that if that's the median, that's not an average. That's the median. That means that there's as many households above that as there is below that. And so that's what they go off of. Now, if you go to Box Elder County or Rich County, they're gonna have a different threshold. So and then to determine low income housing, which we don't have to determine that for our, our purposes, but it's a much lower percentage of the median income, and I don't remember what that is.
All right. I appreciate that. The, just the, the letter at the beginning of this document says the need for low and to moderate income housing.
Oh, that's, that's what the developer is saying.
Right. So I was just curious.
Yeah. So it, so low is lower than three hundred, so. Cause that's moderate is right around in that range. So low's gonna be a little bit significantly lower, probably. Anything else?
Okay. John, any questions?
No.
Okay. Scarlett, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. So at this time, um hopefully that answered some of your questions. I know it's a, it's really detailed. There's so much that we kind of have to consider and think about and goals and plans and and general plans and all sorts of things. So thank you for listening. And at this time, I'll open the public um hearing. And I will uh refer to our sign and sheet. I know it can be a little confusing. Um so if I don't call your name, I'll give you an opportunity at the end. Um but I'll go ahead and invite um Mark Thompson. Are you wanting to speak on this public hearing? Okay. All right. Well, then I will, um I'll invite Benjamin. Benjamin, did you wanna speak on this item?
So.
Oh, if you'll just, um no, come on up, come on up, but state your name in the microphone for record, please.
My name is Benjamin N. Chandler. So I have a few qu- questions. So if this zoning cha- age does happen, uh will residents of the new houses built on the lawn be able to walk to Zollinger or Park and uh the new elementary school that's being built where Spring Creek Middle School is now?
That's a great question. Yeah, I, I, I think that they would be able to walk across the street and access uh Zollinger Park and the elementary school. Thank you, Ben. Okay, um do I have anyone who would like to come up and speak on this agenda item? Yes, come on up and just state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Natalie DeFries. I've never been to a meeting before, but it's good to see friendly faces here.
Thanks for joining us.
I, I also wanted to kind of go first, cause I know there's more experienced speakers behind me, but um I guess one thought that I had, I know I realize it might be on the agenda further on. I wasn't able to find it. There's been talks about doing a potential rec center. And so I wanted to ask, cause I know that this is a plan, and I agree that we do need more moderate income housing. But I also thought this would be a great area for a rec center. That's something that a lot, the whole community would be thrilled to have. Do you guys know if there's any updates about where that rec center might be placed?
That is a great question. Um I did, I have read about it, um but I would invite you to um to send, send an email. I know city council has, has talked about it. Is there a, is there a um survey?
We had a survey.
You had a meeting with NIBLY, right?
I've had a meeting, there was a meeting last night with NIBLY on how to create one. Um NIBLY is leading that.
Okay.
And you might reach out to them. They have fifty acres uh of property that they uh are looking to, to put it.
Okay, so it's most likely gonna be in NIBLY then?
Most likely.
Okay, cool. That sounds great. I think that is everything that I have then. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Come on up.
I'm Crystal Howe. Um I am on three twenty-five west, which will be affected by this possible change. And so just have a few questions about, I'm assuming the road that is currently a dead end or like an ending of a road, um with this possible change would go through um into um all the way to the Spring Creek School. So I'm just checking to see if that's in the plan. There was some, like, some areas that were like open and not all the way through, so I'm just checking to see if that's one of the reasons. And then just wondering about the concept of, it will be one of the only through affairs that will go directly to a, a possible entry for a school drop-off, which would be then a elementary school. I'm just a little concerned about the traffic and the, the, it's the first kind of street that goes directly through a neighborhood that would go through um straight to the school. It's not like this main street going down here or a thirty-five mile an hour over here, just going through a neighborhood that would directly get you into a middle school or elementary school, middle school. I'm just concerned a little bit about the traffic on the street, recognize that homes are needed. Obviously, I needed a home twenty years ago, thirty years ago when I got one, and so I'm, I'm not in any way concerned about getting new neighbors. Just concerned about the street and the traffic and just wanted to put that out as you're discussing, discussing it, um looking at options to make sure that traffic stays. So there's also a park on that street um that um with small children that are, it's a walkable park. It's normally um walked to. It's not necessarily one that we see a lot of traffic with cars, and so concerned about small children on the street. I have small grandkids, but, and a possible vi- a viable way to get through the elementary school and middle school um with, you know, pickup at three and seven in the morning. Um just keeping that in mind and wanting to at least address that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, who's next? Yes, come on up.
So, so my wife and I
You'll just state your name real quick.
Bryce Berry.
Thank you.
My wife and I are gonna miss the Gus Davison's and their pasture with their mule and animals. But we also know the Tolman's and we know that they will be great neighbors, so we approve the R one six redevelopment.
Thank you so much. Okay, do I have anyone else who would like to speak uh on this item, this public hearing? Just state your name for us one more time.
Okay. Benjamin N. Ch- Handler. So personally, I would like it if we did have that dead end street eat and a hundred itself and then cr- connected the pedestrian path between in uh Gateway Drive and Zollinger Park Arc to the upcoming Eno Elementary School.
Okay, thank you. All right. Last call. Any further comments on this agenda item this time?
Reese Peterson, um living on First South. I was the only one here last time when they had the preliminary, so I haven't changed. Say I'm not against wrecking them, furthering their ventures. I'm happy for them. I would just like to see the lots a little bigger. That's all, the twelve. It's just my concern. The road is a speedway down on First South, and these guys can verify that. We still live down there and the ones that have lived there. So it is a pretty dangerous road now. And one day, somebody will get hurt. I guarantee it. People park on the street from the townhouses, that's, there's uh blind spots. But anyway, that was just my concern. But like I say, I was happy for Rex and Tammy. Like I said, they're time of their life. They can move on. So I'm not against them building down there. Just want to see the lots a little bit bigger.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay, um I'm gonna go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. Um and we will move on to the legislative portion. Uh this is item number three, the Timberbrook Homes rezone recommendation. We will review, discuss, and make a recommendation to the city council regarding a rezone request for parcel zero two zero nine six zero zero four eight. Uh again, located in the general area of three fourteen west, one hundred south in Providence. Uh the applicant requests to seek rezone parcel from AGR to R one six. Uh Scarlett already provided us with the staff report, so at this point, I would like to invite Mr. Tolman up to um go ahead and give your presentation.
Thank you, Dallin Tolman.
Thank you.
With Timberbrook Homes. Um would you mind pulling up that presentation for me, please? First of all, I apologize if this is repetitive to you guys. We, we already presented this last time, but I think it will be beneficial for everybody here, and I appreciate everyone showing up. Um I know how it can be having uh development going on in your area. A little bit about us and our business. Um Timberbrook Homes, we're here local. We're a smaller builder and developer. We do most of our work here in Cache County and in Box Elder County. I grew up on a farm in Young Ward. My wife's a Providence native. Um we are in this area all the time, and it's in our best interest and I, I, it's our hopes and our plans to make this as awesome of a community as possible. Uh we want to make it very charming. I think it's a great opportunity to have a really good alternative to other relatively moderate income housing opportunities that, that are available to us. Um without going too tall vertically, we're able to do still single family. Um so that's, that's our main objective, is just to build high-quality, affordable, single-family homes. And also just to have a really good area there in Providence. Next slide, please. You can skip that one. We've already gone over that. So a little bit of our business, we, as a builder, focus on affordable housing. Uh we, we're doing our best to, to create a, an affordable house with a custom feel. And I think overall, that's really what sets us apart from a lot of these other, you know, cookie cutter production builders. We, we put a lot of extra pieces in here that you don't typically see. For example, we like to do really nice custom cabinetry. Uh we have a different style. We're not your typical craftsman style. We do a lot more stucco. We do a lot more creams and earth tones and different things like that. Uh we almost always put a fireplace or some accent or other piece into our house. Probably most importantly, almost all of our houses sell for under four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh it's rare that they don't, just cause that's the size and the, the demographic that we're shooting for the price point. Uh most of our homes are also single-story. We, we like to sell a home that is available to first-time homebuyer young families. It's also available to elderly people who are looking to have a step-free home. Uh and, and everyone in between. We see a, a wide variety of homebuyers that purchase our products. Most of our homes that we're doing, we're doing three and four-bed homes, and that's, that's our product. Next slide, please. So I'm sure this is probably the main question of, of what's on everybody's mind and what was mentioned previously, is why such a small zone? Uh with this, with this particular parcel, we are facing a challenge where this, this parcel's very wide. And when we run the road right down the middle, the depth of each lot on either side would create, with the frontage requirements, third acre plus size lots. Uh lots that are really nice, but they're probably not gonna be in the affordability standpoint that we'd like to see and that we're, we're hoping to achieve with this development. Um just as a little bit of background and explanation too for the audience here, each zone does come with a size requirement with, with the zone. So R one six is a six thousand foot minimum lot size. But they also do come with a frontage requirement, requiring how much of the lot needs to be facing the road, how wide they are. Uh the reason we're going for an R one six is because with the depth of the lot, the width requirements, the frontage requirements on some of the larger zones would require these lots to be much larger and not as affordable. Therefore, with an R one six, we can have a little bit more narrow, but very deep lot. And most of these lots in our plan are still over ten thousand feet. They're gonna be nice, good-sized lots. It's gonna be a good-sized subdivision. And will be a great transition point from the multifamily, the townhomes, they're a couple hundred feet away, to our single-family area residential here in the bottom of Providence. Next slide, please. Um so we're, like I said, we're, we're breaking that out. We do plan to have, to keep that existing home where it's at. That existing home will be in a roughly half-acre parcel, uh slightly less, and that will be sold separately from the rest of the development. Um that road, three twenty-five, is going to continue straight through, as was mentioned. Uh we do plan on having a slight jog just to have a little bit more, uh a little bit more equilibrium between our, our lots on either side. And then obviously, this is all subject to the rezone, and that's a further stage down, down the road, as has been mentioned. And then all of that is planned to be. Next slide, please. So at, at the end of the day, that's, that's really why we're here and why we're looking for this. We're hoping to create um a good alternative to affordable housing here in Providence. And we are hoping to create affordable homes with a custom feel that is hard to find in today's market and keep families here local in Providence. And I've got my contact information here on the last slide. Uh if anybody has questions, they, they can reach out to us and email, text, anything works fine. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Bob, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at this uh slide with the, the gray with the lots and the road. Going through it, and you, you've got an existing home here that's out in the middle of the road. Is that, is that the house that's going to stay?
Yes.
So how
No, that's a, that's
Oh yeah, so that, sorry, the mouse was in the corner, so that's what I thought you were referring to. There's a house in the corner, upper right-hand corner on the larger lot. That's what's remaining. The barn, and there's a, there's like an arena right there.
Oh, okay. So that isn't a home?
Those will be removed. Yes, they're, they're just outbuildings.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
No, I don't think so.
John, do you have any questions?
Um so th- this addresses all the concerns that we heard about, about uh through traffic and stuff, I guess, right? Or is that a different?
Well, what, what's your concern?
Well, I'm just, I wanna make sure that it uh appeases those people. If, if it were, were the questions that, or the comments that people made up here referring to this?
Yes.
And that they wanted access through?
Yes.
And it provides access through with the street, right, sidewalk?
It does.
Okay.
It, um, you know, I mean, traffic could still be a concern. Um there is a, there is a bend in the road, um which sometimes slows traffic, we've heard. Is that, is that what you're asking?
I, I would just, I just wanted to make sure that what their comments were about were
This parcel?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Because they wanted access to the
The schools
Middle school and stuff.
Yeah, there's a park on the other side, um Zollinger Park. Uh there's a new parking lot there. Um and then beyond that is the, is the school.
The, this won't go through all the way to the school, obviously.
Right, right. So
Dead end at First South.
Yeah.
Parking lot. And then there's a field.
It'll tee into First South.
Then there's the school farther north. The, the drop-off to the school would be up on First North, not First South.
Right. So I was, I was a little confused about the comments with this, cause I wasn't sure how it related, with how they related.
So this is the end of the road, cause it goes into a T, and then you either go right or left
Right.
to get to the school. Just to make that clear. So, and then um just to follow up on that, the, there is a nice parking lot. And then there's a, a dirt field basically, and then the new pickleball courts. There's not a path yet. I assume there will be a path from the parking lot that will go
But it is not there yet.
Right. So there will be. There's not currently access to Zollinger Park directly as far as a, a paved path. Yet to go one way or the other, just like the cars, until that path's done, right?
Yeah. Walk across that field if you wanted to, but it's not.
Right. There's not a path. There, I mean, I've gone across that, walking and biking, but there's not a path yet, right? Just, just to clarify, so.
Sorry to add that confusion, sir.
Oh, no, that's okay. Did you have any uh questions for the developer?
I, I don't think so. I, I don't think so.
Bob, how about you?
I, I don't know that I do, I, I, I know Reese brought up the concern about the size of the lots, and, and you've addressed that, other than they're narrow because they're deeper, and so they're average around 10,000 square feet, right? I assume the other homes on that street have wider frontage than, than this, this, so it would definitely look different. There'd, there'd be a decent, I, I don't know how big the lots are on the rest of that street. Do you have any idea?
They would be the 10,000-square-foot ones, and so their width.
The, the lots to the south are in a R110 zone, and so that lot width is 80 feet. So, and then this, this lot width would be 60. If you want to think about what these lots would look like, these are bigger, about twice as big, because if these are gonna, if these are going to average 10,000 square feet. But if you go over into the Brookside neighborhood, where Arts Place is, and over off of over north of 100 North and 200 North over in that area, those lots are in an R16 zone. And they are 6,000 square foot, they're, most of them are really close to six. Some of them bounce up to eight, none of them are less than six, but they have the 60-foot-wide frontages. So if you wanted to know what that looked like, the lots in that Brookside area, when you're driving past them, that's, that's what it would look like. They and that's, that's the reason why, as he explained, he's asking for that, is because if it was R112, it would be 95 feet. If it was R110, it would be 80, and then the R16 is the 60, so it makes it a little bit I don't know if it's going to be more attractive to buyers or not, but that's what Dallin is banking on.
Thank you, Scarlett.
And most of our frontage, at least on the plan, just because of the way the lots sit, they're going to end up being a little bit over 65 on our frontage. Like I said, this is, it's not our subdivision, i- it's all preliminary, and it's all going to depend on how the survey comes back with how much actual footage we have in front of every lot, but it's going to be at least 60, depending on how it plays out, it's going to be most likely a little bit more 65, just because we, they don't fit just right.
Yeah, it looks like 62.8 to 65, somewhere in that range.
About that, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't think I have any at this time, so thank you so much for coming up and speaking with us. Now we will go ahead and just deliberate on the item and
And the part of the meeting we're in right now, the hearing, the hearing?
The hearing's closed. Yep. We closed the hearing. So now we will go ahead and just deliberate, do you, do you guys have any concerns, any, any further questions for staff or for the developer, what are your thoughts?
Well, the one concern is the, the size of the lots, and so I, I don't know how you determine before you have buyers what size a lot to make them. I mean, other than, you know, he's done his analysis for for the R16 sizes. We have a gentleman that would like to see them larger. But I don't know how you reconcile that.
Well, you're, from, from my standpoint, the lot size, you're maybe confusing the lot size to the frontage, road frontage. Because they're going to be narrow lots, but there, there'll be quite large lots for this zone, according to this. But, but the frontage.
What, what is it in terms of acres?
Pardon me?
What is it in terms of acres, do you know, ten?
Roughly a quarter, a little.
A quarter acre?
Yeah, so they're, they're decent-sized lots, I mean, bigger than you would normally get in a R16. So you could have a nice garden in the back, or swimming pool, or whatever you want. But I, I, I understand the concept of, of having the narrower lot. You, you can have the lot size be like, like the, the one that has the remaining house in it, is going to be a huge lot, but it's still zoned the same. So you know, as far as I, as far as I'm concerned, these are nice, big lots for, for this, this zone. The lot size isn't, isn't the issue, it's probably the, the narrowness. And it loo- looks cramped from the road, maybe. Your other question about the, the traffic in this area, I think this, making that road into a through-street is likely to increase traffic quite a lot to, to get over to First South. And, you know, that's, that, that would be an issue. And I think that's been raised some. Because right now, you, you have a, a dead end there where the park is, and and there's not a lot of through traffic, it's just the people who live there who drive back and forth, but now you're going to triple the size, number of houses on that street. And it's going to be a through-street, so you have an outlet, and so you're going to have a lot more traffic on, on the older part of the road and, and on this new part of the road. But if, if it's going to be developed, there's likely going to need to be a road that, that connects to First South. I don't know that anything else is going to be ma- make the, make it different unless we have some kind of a calming scheme as far as traffic goes. But that's not our, our issue, we, we need to just talk about whether the, we, we feel like the zoning is appropriate. And make a recommendation. But tho- those are issues that that are going to happen if this gets developed.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Henke, would you like to speak on this, on the matter?
Well, I'm just a little bit mixed, I, I appreciate the size of the lots and everything. The narrow, narrowness is an issue, but you've got large enough lots as well, so it's going to increase traffic, it always does when you add homes on a street. I don't know how much it'll add to the new area, because I think most would well, I don't know, high school kids are going to maybe go either way, but so I, I don't know if I have any other questions or comments, I, I guess, I, I'll be honest, I thought there'd be more people here concerned about building these homes than there are, so. So anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I see the, the road going through as just completing, completing the block. There's, there's a kind of a dead end there, almost looking like it's, it's prepared to do so. I think that this is a good buffer zone for, for the surrounding area. I think it's great that the, that they, that you know, we can, we can fit larger lots than the, the R16, that they, they can be larger than R16, they don't have to be limited to that, to that specification. So that's, that's where I'm at, I, I just want to say that I appreciate you all for coming here, and, and we take what you have to say very seriously, and we consider all sides of, of the issue. We do have to think about our general plan and allowing more people to come into Providence and live and thrive. And we are in a place where it is so hard to find a home, and it's so expensive. So bringing something in that can be more moderately affordable, even if it's not moderately affordable, is progress in, toward that goal. So that's where I'm coming from, I'll, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll vote on tonight, and we'll see where that goes. Again, I'd just like to remind everybody that we are just voting on the zone. So at any point in time, the plans that you saw tonight, they, they may not come into fruition. The land can be bought, it can be sold, it can change, so we are just voting, is this going to be RM6? Is that appropriate for this? R16, thank you. Is that appropriate for this location in the city? That's all we're really voting on, and we are a recommendation body, so we're just going to recommend to the city council, and they will have a deliberation that will, will finalize the, the recommend, the, the zoning change.
I have one more question, probably for Scarlett, the, the R16 allows for an external IDU? Or ADU?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, this road is on the master plan, on the transportation plan, to connect 300 South with 100 South through this road, so they are following the transportation plan.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Let's go ahead and bring it to a vote. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that Item 3, Timberbrook Homes rezone recommendation, that we recommend to the city council that this be approved with the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions that have been brought up.
Thank you, Bob, do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries. All right, that's it for item number 3. You are all welcome to stay, if you'd like to be further entertained, or I'll give you an opportunity to, to get out of here. Thank you so much again for, for joining us.
So if we stay, we get to, will we get to see the preliminary plat for the Hilldale?
You will, yes. All right, moving on to item number 4, amending Hilldale prelimi- preliminary plat, this is our study, hold on, sorry. This is not a study item, administrative action item. Yes, item number 4, amending Hilldale preliminary plat, the Providence City Commission will review, discuss, and may take action on a request to amend and modify the street layout of the Hilldale preliminary plat. And I'll go ahead and invite Scarlett up to go over the analysis with us.
So if you'll remember, the first preliminary plat that came in, the developer wanted a cul-de-sac on the south end. And staff had concerns with that, because we had the plan was for that road in the hollows to continue north into this development. But they were going to, they, the developer worked really diligently to try and come up with a positive turnaround situation, so that, that both the ideas would work. However, and Jody is here, he can go, get more into it, but the grades to try and make that the cul-de-sac on the south, and the turnaround, and all of that work, just were not panning out. So Jody's not asking to reconsider the entire plan, now it will change the lot configuration slightly, because instead of the cul-de-sac being on the south, it's going to be on the north part. But so, but it, Jody, you'll have to correct me, I don't think we're changing the number of lots, just the configuration.
Correct.
I believe it does add one lot.
So, okay, it may add one lot. This connects with the hollows, sub, or homes on the Knoll subdivision. It also goes west to connect with Hilldale Way, I believe that's what the comment was about, that I will read in a minute. And then as you can see, you can see the old cul-de-sac bulb there, kind of on the south end of the development, and now you would see where the new one is. Now, what this is is just a graphic. When he, he will come back to staff, and, because you'd approved this preliminary plat, and we were working with him, he's been working with us to try and get those roads to match, and they just won't. If you approve this, the preliminary plat will look like a true preliminary plat, this won't be a big, wide brush stroke. It will actually look like a regular road cross-section. It will, it will fit, and so, so it will look like a normal preliminary plat, it won't just look like this big, wide brush stroke. But if you weren't willing to entertain this idea, then there was no point to having completely redo that. So he has followed our, our code. The reason why it's coming back to you is we felt like this was a significant enough change that the planning commission should weigh in on it. You know, you leave it, you leave some discretion to staff, you, you establish conditions, and then you leave some discretion to us to make sure that we get those conditions met, and that the ordinances are met on the preliminary plat. And then, of course, the, the way the state code is now, the final plat gets approved through the staff, we, the city engineer, the public works director, and the community development director signed that plat, and then there's some other signatures involved in it as well, but we signed the final. But we wanted your blessing on this, this change. So, the, that's why the, the staff report is significantly shorter, because we're just looking at just, just what applies to transportation. This, we did look at the requirements, now, when we go back, if you approve this, and we finish out with the other conditions on the full preliminary plat, we will keep all the conditions you had before, except for the turnaround thing, and then we will have this, this new road, so this is not negating anything but the turnaround part, because it won't be necessary now because of where the cul-de-sac is going to be. So the other comment, the irrigation company, Blacks, or excuse me, Spring Creek Water Company, they'll see the construction plans, we, we keep them in the loop on things. Ryan notified the board that there was a change, because they liked the other, the other plan, but like I said, that just, they're just really struggling to make it meet our code for the street layout. So the conclusions, the preferred area for this from the general plan framework is residential, which we've already discussed in the original approval. The transportation plan, the goal is to maintain and improve mobility within the city for all uses, placing a focus on moving people and vehicles. We want to have street connectivity infrastructure. This section references the general plan initiative, objective 4, to promote development pa- patterns that provide connectivity. This actually does provide more connectivity than the other way. And so, we feel like, we feel like if anything, this change is more supportive of our general plan and our transportation plan. Like I said, they will have to continue though, to make sure that the grades and everything work, but from from the perspective of meeting the general plan and the transportation plan, this works. So, questions?
How does it change, change the transportation plan? I mean, that's a cul-de-sac on that one side, and cul-de-sac on, it was a cul-de-sac the other direction, so.
Because it prevented the people from the south. The only way the people from the south could enter this development would be to go down to 300 East, and then turn and go back to the north. And to get into this development, this way, they'll just, they can just come straight into it. They don't have to go down to, they don't have to go down 300 North, along 300 East and come back, it connects those two. along three hundred east and come back. It connects those two developments. It connects Homes on the Knoll with.
And it didn't before?
No, because the cul-de-sac was there. And that, so the T.
Oh, so you're taking the cul-de-sac out? Or?
The cul-de-sac to the, to the north, rather than being to the south, it's to the north. And so that makes it so that the connection here.
Oh, there's a connection there.
Yes.
Okay.
The cul-de-sac is still present.
Yeah.
Still accomplishing the cul-de-sac idea.
Where's the existing roads on there and what's not existing?
Well, none of it's existing.
None of the roads are existing.
Okay, that's why I can't find anything.
Yeah.
But the.
Have to put those in.
The, the dark gray is the new road.
It's representation of.
Terminates at that, uh, north, uh.
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac there and the, the road there that goes, uh, east and west is gonna disappear.
This road here would disappear.
Right.
Yeah.
I can't see where you're pointing.
Does that, does that make more sense? This, this, uh, cul-de-sac on the south disappears.
Right.
This is a new cul-de-sac and this road going east and west.
Yeah, I understood that, but I just didn't understand that, that the corner of that brush stroke was connected to some other road. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
A, a, a planned road.
A planned road.
It's a preliminary platted road, but not.
An existing road.
Not existingly built.
And it's an approved preliminary plat.
Okay.
And we will see the preliminary plat again.
No, you won't need to see it again if you approve this. Cause we will just keep all the same. Yes, we'll keep all the same conditions and everything, except for on the south end where that little T is, that condition goes away. And this new configuration will go into place. But everything else as far as um, the concerns that you had. And we will work with the irriga- or the developer will work with the irrigation company. The city will make sure that they are involved and know what the changes are, but so they will be, they will have some input with the developer on their infrastructure, but. So we'll keep all the conditions except for that little hammerhead.
Okay.
Uh, just another question. Until, until we get a connection to the Knolls, the Knoll Homes on the Knoll. How, how long is this road to the cul-de-sac? It's more than six hundred feet? Is that, I mean, that's the limit for a cul-de-sac? Is that right?
Yes.
It, it's more than six hundred feet if you go east and then north. But once we get a connection on the road of the Knolls, then, then it's less than six hundred feet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And this sloping, is that point zero five percent sloping to the intersection? Is that really true?
Yes.
Almost level.
Very, very close to that.
It may not be exact because we, he hasn't done the exact one for us, but.
Okay. And that's, that's going from north to south? The, the, the one east and west? The east and west piece is, is that the same slope? It's more slope, right, right, right. Okay. Are there houses on this side of Hilldale Way?
Yes.
Already existing, right?
They're not existing.
No?
Planned, but they're not affected by this change.
Okay, got it.
And that's not changing the phasing either. The south is still going to be phase two. The north is still going to be phase one. It's just changing, instead of having the east-west street and then the cul-de-sac to the south, now it's gonna have the east-west street and the cul-de-sac to the north.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions for Scarlett?
No.
Jody, do you wanna come on up?
I'm Jody Robbins, the developer of Hilldale. So you guys know how passionate I was about not connecting into there and, um, at the time, we thought that was the only way to give the irrigation company what they wanted and, um, after we started, uh, doing the road elevations, we found out in that top left corner up there, we ended up with a fifteen foot cut into the road or cut into the native grade. And the lot above it has ten foot of slope on top of that. So we were going to have twenty-five feet right on that corner where the irrigation line runs, which was going to make a belly in the irrigation line that was basically twenty-five feet deep. So that we could accommodate the, um, the road code that we need to follow. When we found that out, that's not what anybody was envisioning there. That's not what the irrigation company was envisioning there. That's not what we were envisioning there. So we went back to the drawing board and honestly, if I would have come up with this plan before, this is the plan we would have come with because we're able to still have minimal effect on the irrigation line. And the irrigation line is one of the main things that's going to set that slope on, on the, uh, east road up there. And whether that's one slope to the side or a small bend, it's all less than, less than four percent slope, which is what is, we're required in intersections. Um, we lengthened the road. We added about two hundred feet of road by doing this. And that two hundred feet of road gives us the ability from Hilldale Way up to where we would connect into Homes on the Knoll is thirty-seven feet of rise in native grade. With the calculations of what, uh, we can do with the road, um, steepnesses and, and having a hundred foot approach to the intersection that's less than four percent, we can actually gain thirty-seven feet. It was crazy to me that it was the exact same amount going across there. So we can be at native on Hilldale Way and at native where we connect into, uh, Homes on the Knoll. We also still kept the integrity of, of the cul-de-sac that a lot of people wanted. And then I've talked to Mike Johnson, the new water master with, um, Spring Creek Parkway, or sorry, Spring Creek Irrigation Company. Um, they like the change because they don't want a belly in their, their main line as well. And I've also talked to the neighbors around there and Corey Bowers that would have been at the end of this road that we're taking out or that we're not going to do. Now, he's not at the end of a road coming into his property. All of our roads' intersections or, or Ts in the property are, are within the property. So nobody that's buying a lot will, will be surprised by that. We're not changing anything on anybody that, that has, um, been there. So just to summarize, the, it's better for the irrigation company because we don't have the dip in the irrigation. We still have the similar, just adding one forty-five degree elbow onto their irrigation line. We specifically designed it that way. Um, the neighbors like this plan and, um, it meets what Providence City, uh, wanted more by connecting into, uh, Homes on the Knoll. And, um, again, if, if I would have, it's easy to see it now when it's drawn. But it's amazing to me that of the, the fifteen or so iterations of this plan that it took getting more information and those elevations of the roads to come up with this plan, which seems like a better plan all the way around. Um, it, I often talk as a developer about putting the pieces of the puzzle together and meeting everybody's needs, whether it's Providence City or the residents or state code. And this seems to be a really good way to do that. So that's why we're asking just to shift that road um, down and will now make that connection. We still have a cul-de-sac and, um, it's, it, that's why we're asking for the change. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I don't.
Nope.
Okay. I think that's it, Jody. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go ahead and bring this item to, yes. Oh, we do have a comment. Thank you for reminding me.
This comment comes from, I believe it's Kira Moon. Uh, to whom I may concern, I am writing regarding the Hilldale flat plan. I encourage the planning commission to require a stub on the future Hilldale Way near three fifty north. It would be good for the Knoll subdivision to have a future road with straightforward access to three hundred east, especially when heads it south. It would also help improve future access to the five acres of fields belonging to Mark and Judy Baldwin at approximately three fifty north, three hundred east, if those fields are ever developed. Thank you for discussing this. Sincerely, Kira Moon.
Can, can you point where that is?
Let me see if I can point. The, uh, city has a piece of property here. This would allow, if there was a stub.
That three hundred east, your, the.
Three hundred east is here.
Okay.
And then there is, uh, the city property here. It would be designed for a future, future road through. If there was a stub, now his property is over here. Uh.
Who, who's property?
Jody Robbins. Property's over here.
Okay.
And so the question, I believe, is having a stub to go to the west off of, off of the subdivision that could then eventually go and through and connect all the way to third east. Rather than sending around and down.
Round to.
To second north or sending it around and up to Spring Creek Parkway. It would give an access. We have one to the east, which is just connected to the, well, there would be one here to connect to the east on third north. And then the next one that was just talked about would be another one up here to connect to the east. But there's not one to connect to the west. I believe that's how I interpret the comment.
So can you point to that on the?
Gray, the gray road? It isn't, it isn't lined up.
It's not lined up.
Is it? Right. So, so the stub would, would basically you'd need, you'd lose a lot.
Yes, yes.
Along, along.
To lose a lot.
Along Hilldale Way there, you'd lose a lot.
In order to send.
Right.
What they're asking is to give up a lot to send it so that you could then eventually connect through to third east.
From Hilldale.
As I understand the comment.
Currently that connection comes off of right here and T's into Hilldale Way and about this area here. So if we continued west, we would go straight into the back of this house.
Right. But they could.
If you came down.
If you came down on your subdivision to this one, it would, this house would come out through. We're only asking about the one road. The one area.
Right. For, for today's discussion, but I, I'm just trying to understand the, the question. And I, I, I agree with what she's saying, but. To, from third east and, and third east could go up to Hilldale Way, but that would lose a lot.
Yes. They are gaining a lot with this new.
Right, but I mean, I mean, that's, I like that.
Shrink the lots.
Right, so. I mean, that's, that's a comment from, from the public and it's not part of this, not part of our decision right now, but I, I, I like that concept. Doesn't matter what I like.
Is the, uh, that, that gray picture, was that, how was that oriented with respect to that other app?
See where the gray ground is?
Yeah.
Can, can you put your mouse on it for us on this computer or on this screen over here?
He did.
I think that's where that, can you see the?
Uh, move it so I can see where. I don't see a mouse.
Homes on the Knoll, where that mouse is.
Yes, sir.
If you rotate the brush stroke around ninety degrees.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay.
Ninety degrees clockwise.
Okay.
It fits in this area right here. So the cul-de-sac head is right here. And the road comes down into future Hilldale.
This right here, this top north, top piece here is the north piece that connects to this.
Right.
So this little diagonal road piece is the other half of this diagonal road piece. That's, it's up here.
So I'm not seeing where you lose a piece of property.
Well.
Not in phase.
Not, not in this, in this picture. It's not in this picture.
Okay.
When Jody was here before, there was an expanded drawing of this, right? Do you, can we find that anywhere? I think it'd be easier to show where that's at if we could see a larger drawing.
This is just information. Doesn't really affect.
Yeah.
Whether we'd make this choice or not.
Well, and if not, I, I just thought it might be easier. Just to see, to see the, yeah, the whole.
Me too, I can't quite see far enough to see the screens.
Let's talk procedure.
Yeah, we, we, we can go ahead and vote while he's looking that up. That's just information.
We've already approved the, the preliminary plat and this is just making a modification to that.
Right.
Correct? Um, hypothetically, does it let us make further modifications or we're just approving this application?
No, we.
Theoretically you are, the preliminary plat is included in both. So he is asking you change to the preliminary plat. So it would
Open.
Potentially include, it opened the entire preliminary plat to be approved. No, that's not what he's asking for and this is specific for a street layout.
This, one, one other comment. This, this isn't going back to the city council. This is not, not a recommendation. We're just, this will be an approval from us, right? Right, that's what I thought. Just so we're all clear.
Yeah, I'd like to hold off for just a moment and review that, the entire plat, if that's okay, Ryan. Sorry, no pressure. Uh, we'll just, we'll take a brief.
It was the meeting in March where I think there were bigger drawings.
Where's the best place to find that?
If you hold up the previous agendas.
Yeah, do.
On the city website.
Look at the agenda in March.
The exhibit's still attached to that.
It would, it should still be attached to that agenda.
You said it was March?
Yeah. I just, I found it.
March?
You sent out March sixth. Tyler did.
While we're, while we're looking for that, I'll, I'll just address my, my reasoning. Um, it is something that I thought about a lot. I drive that street every day, nearly, uh, three hundred east. Um, and we do have city property and a stub. Well, a potential, a city property to continue that road. So we did discuss it, um. But I just wanted to open it up again to find out if that, if that was fully considered and if that's something we should, we should look into, we should look at again.
You go down one more page, there's a cul-de-sac.
Perfect.
There it is, it is pretty, I do like it.
And it would be at some point, does it line up with this cul-de-sac? So would it be lot thirty-five?
But what extent to thirty?
The street to, to reach the stub.
I was trying to reach to see if I could get over to the three fifty.
This property line, property line, the properties that you guys.
Okay, so let me pull this over and pull this up here. And kind of looks like this, this property line and this property line, so if we're just above it, we're somewhere in this area.
It's those two property lines, yeah, it is that property.
Yeah, I was, these are, these property lines.
These two property.
Are the ones that match up with these two, right? Right, so if you were looking at three fifty, if you were looking to, to match to here, it's one of these two, well, you could, you could potentially have it be this one and create a through street and then it would jog slightly down to where it would be at, so he would lose, potentially lose this lot. That, that would be the, what I think you're asking.
Right, well, that's, that's what Kira is suggesting, I, I think that when we discussed this back in March, I, I lobbied for that as well then. So I, you know, yeah, I totally think that's a great idea, I recognize that that's a loss in a lot, but.
And so three fifty.
I don't know that we can require that, but.
Three fifty north is technically a street, is that what I'm seeing on the, I mean, it's not.
It's not built.
It's not a built street, but it's, it's a city property with the approximate width of the street.
Intent of someday.
Three fifty north.
I believe that's potential, I don't know.
We'd have to look at that, I think right now, we used to have a street wi- a street width of, it was either fifty or fifty-six feet, and I think that's what that is right now. So it would not meet our current city standard for a sixty-six-foot right-of-way. But when they did, when they did that, they did set that aside with the idea that that they would, they wanted to make sure they had access back into the lot when they created those other lots along the front there. So they set that little part aside. That was a long time ago, but that's, and it might be wider than that, but I, I think it's only fifty or fifty-six feet wide. I don't think it's a full sixty-six.
And I don't think we would expect it to be a collector uh, road, I mean, it was not planned the collector road of any type that way.
Right.
It was not set aside as a, a major minor collector. So if it did, it would be a, a, similar to what you just talked about for the uh, re-zone, that that road would come through, that's a, that's a connecting road, but not a, so it's a master planned road there, that one. Um, but not a major or minor collector. Um, if you did this, that would be similar to what you would be doing here.
And there's enough room for that.
At this point, I think Scarlett's right, it's probably between fifty and fifty-five, but it's probably what that piece of property is designed for. So when, when this property developed, they might have to acquire right-of-way to, to get into it, to widen the extra development. I, I don't know what that development will look like. If you don't, how would you propose that this person, where do you propose that this person develop from? If you were that property owner, where would they develop from?
Wait, which one?
This, the Baldwin piece that she brought up.
Right, okay.
Cause there's not another access into it at this point.
It's, it's landlocked right now.
That would be the only access, is the potential of the three fifty north.
Or, or the lot that you're asking about from Jody's.
Right, right now, that, that Baldwin property is uh, it, it doesn't have a road access into it.
It does not.
So, right.
Okay.
Expensive decision to make.
Any further deliberation on the topic?
Hmm.
All right. Do you want to make another motion, Bob?
Yeah, Bob.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
That's not to say that is, these other pieces down here, what, if they came in to develop, that's not to say that we wouldn't do with them like we did with Homes on the Knoll and say, that's fine, but you're going to make way for this um, undeveloped piece to have access to it. So you can do that here with Jody, but we would also, unless the code changes, and we couldn't, but right now, the way the city code reads, as we worked with some of that other undeveloped property, we could also ask them to make sure there was some type of connectivity into there.
Okay. So are you saying that, that we do have the ability to require that at this point?
You could set as a, as a condition as you have set other conditions.
I'm saying that we could. You could work with Jody, you could work with the other undeveloped properties that have room to develop on when they come in, I'm just saying that that's not the only, Jody's is not the only property that that piece touches.
Could, could allow access.
Yes, yeah.
But our opportunity is now for Jody.
For Jody, it would be now, but.
So.
O- okay, so, so really quickly then, you're talking about that one area that you just had highlighted, Ryan, and.
This property?
That, uh-huh, well, but the big piece, that's the access to that piece right now. And it could be possibly to the north.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so there's two other areas, otherwise, what we're saying, I, I mean, what's being talked about maybe is where Jody's property is, they would have to go to the east to catch that, to get out of there, instead of going to the west or to the north. Which most people like the shortest distance between two places, not go up and around and back down, right?
And, and it may not be one or the other, or it may.
Right.
I don't know what.
That person's not here to tell us what they want to do, so.
Right.
Yeah. So I make a motion. If that's all right, you asked for one, right? Based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the conditions that have been brought up, that we approve the recommended change in the uh, design of the roads in the cul-de-sac. In uh.
He'll stay a subdivision.
Where's it at here, what's the number?
Number four.
Item number four.
In what?
Item number four.
Item number four in the Hillsdale subdivision, is that good?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the motion carries. All right, we have no study items tonight.
Buddy back in the.
Uh, Ty, if you'll just let the record show that Joe Chambers was unable to attend and was absent at tonight's meeting. And we will, I will entertain and motion to adjourn.
Can I say something before?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that it's been a great privilege for me to be able to serve the city for three years and uh, this will be my last meeting, so, thank you, I appreciate my association with you and uh, been fun.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, then I'd like to say thank you too, you've always come well-prepared and, and had great input, so thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I've, I've appreciated your service as a member of the community as well. Really good input on our meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think you ought to do in a, a celebratory motion, your last opportunity.
Let's take the rest of the night off, shall we? Okay, vote on that, second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.